All right, I am going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is November 12th, 2025, and this is the meeting of the Carbonell Colorado Parks and Recreation Commission. We are an advisory commission made up of volunteers to assist and consult with town staff and make recommendations to our elected town officials. My name is Hollis Sutherland and I'm honored to be Chair of the Commission this year. And I'm joined by fellow volunteers Vice Chair Drew Sorensen, Ashley Haidmanek, Leslie Keery, Rachel Bachman Perkins, Susan Ray, Rose Rosello, and our Youth Commissioners Nick Nardesia and Amalia Sparhawk. We are joined by our Carbonell staff, Eric Brenlinger, Parks and Recreation Director, Robin Jacober, Recreation Manager, and Ally Wetstein, our Boards and Commission Clerk. Erica Sparhawk is our Board of Trustees liaison. And I welcome anyone who may be watching live or via recording. Thank you for participating in your local government. As a commission, we strive to serve the town of Carbondale by setting aside personal biases and looking at what's best for our community. We honor diverse opinions, promote inclusivity, and endeavor to keep our discourse civil and respectful. So we will get started. Ally, are you doing roll call? Is that the next step?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, Ashley Haidmanek?
Here.
Rachel Bachman Perkins? Absent. Rose Rosello?
She's here via Zoom.
Okay. Hollis Sutherland?
Here.
Susan Ray?
Here.
Drew Sorensen, absent, excused. Uh, Leslie Keery, excused. Nick Nardesia?
Here.
Amalia Sparhawk?
Here.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, um, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
I make a motion to the minutes.
Approve them. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Unsupposed? Okay, um. So those are accepted. We have Anna Rosen, is it Rosenberg?
Yeah.
Okay, um, here to, um, talk with us tonight. I think about the nature park.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. Um, yeah, my name is Anna Rosenberg. I own a Carbondale local dog walking and animal care business, for about three and a half years now. I believe I was at the Parks and Rec meeting in May. And I do understand that you all have a master plan that will go into progress after the pool finishes for the Carbondale Nature Park. I'm excited to see that happen. My concern back in May was the degradation of the trails in the park during spring and fall, the way that it gets muddy there. Just kind of expanding on that. Um, and I was under the impression that when I left the meeting, it sounded like there was, um, some favor towards taking money to temporarily fix the paths. Um, and I am just not sure where you all stand on that. Um, I would also like to say again, um, my business loves to throw fundraisers. And I would love to throw one for the town of Carbondale to raise money specifically for this purpose. Uh, so if that is something that we can collaborate on together and you guys are interested in that, I would really be interested in talking to you all more about that. That's all I've got.
Okay, thanks. I can kind of, um, fill you in on kind of what our thought processes are with that, with that issue, really, the degradation of those trails, the widening of those trails, you know, spilling out of those trails when there is wet, wet spots there. And, um, what, what we'd like to do, and I just kind of made this decision with our parks supervisor, because we looked at our budgets, you know?
Sure.
We're in that, in that zone of the year where we look at our budget and say, okay, what, what can we do with our existing money that we have left? Especially on deferred maintenance like this. And so we have enough money in our parks, you know, maintenance budget to get a load of engineered wood fiber. And that's that, that material that we use for our fall attenuation in our, um, parks, I mean, in our playgrounds. So that's that same material you'll see in our, in our playgrounds as, as the footing material. And it's, it's, they call it engineered wood fiber because it is engineered so it can kind of hook together when it's compacted.
Okay.
And so, and it actually can be ADA compliant when it's compacted correctly.
I love that.
And so we're think, you know, we've done this effort before, but with donated material. Um, and we, we kind of had mixed bag of material. We had some concrete in it at one point. Um, and just big chunks and pieces that didn't really do the job we wanted to. So I think our, we're going to try this, um, and this, this fall, I mean, now.
We are, we are. Okay. I mean, I'd love to hear that. Yeah. I just wasn't sure what was going on.
But here, here's the caveat on that. We're, we're, um, going to have the users be a part of, of, of distributing it. And so we're gonna hopefully do a little, little signage there. We're gonna dump it into a certain spot there right at the beginning. Leave some material like wheelbarrows and shovels and have some signage there that says, you know, if you see a muddy spot in the trail, you know.
Take a wheelbarrow over.
Just while you're on your loop, man, do you mind taking a wheelbarrow over? And it should, because of the way it's engineered, it should compact down and, and help us out. That's, that's the experiment, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is, is it, you know, after the winter's over, wow, is it still there or is it gone? Or is it?
Right.
Did it work or not? But we'll find that out.
Is there any type of idea to have some sort of border along the trails so that it doesn't spread out into the fields?
Yeah, we, we haven't gone that far because it's, the, the linear distance is, is pretty huge, so.
It is.
So I think let's, I think let's do this first, see how much product it takes.
Sure.
And, uh, and see if it works.
Uh huh.
Um, and so I think it's a, I think it's a good plan in the interim, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, do you know around when that's going to start? And like, can I help, um, with advertising for like, community, uh, like getting people to help?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be fantastic. So I think what, what we'll probably do is, uh, when we get the material onsite, it's, it's, uh, we just looked at the budget, so we'll have to order it. And get it delivered onsite. We're gonna have to get some equipment down there to move some rocks for the truck to deliver it.
Sure.
But, um, so it's a little bit of logistics, but, but I'm really curious as to if this will work or not. So we definitely want to do it. And then, you know, to educate the public on what it's for and its purpose, we'd love the, your help in that, getting that word out, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I think that's all I've got.
Eric, are, Eric, are you gonna put piles in many places or just at the entrance?
No, probably just one dump. Yeah, the way it comes is in like a dumpable, um.
Because it really needs to be out there by the, where the creek comes real close?
Yeah.
And are you intending to put enough down there that will cover the whole trail or just?
More just the problem here.
The problem area.
Yeah, that's how we kind of.
Because there's also the problem area where the ditches cross in the middle, like going to the, the historic building?
The house.
Those, where the, where the trail, where people have made more trails through the middle there where they cross. Because I did see the last time I was out there that, yeah, there's starting to be trails beside the trails, even out there in the middle, right? It's like.
I noticed that today, which I haven't noticed before.
And yeah, I was out there a week or so and going to start. And so the other thing I thought was, um, you know, as we're cutting down trees, couldn't some of those big sections of logs be put along, not the whole trail, but alongside some of those areas where it's going to be particularly bad? Like over by the, where people get in the, in the ditch over there?
I think that's a great idea, yeah. Line things with trees.
Yeah. Are you in contact with Becky? I can't remember her last name. The Friends of, of the Nature Park?
Um, I have not had good experiences with Becky.
Okay, because I just wondered if that was still a thing?
Um, I think, I think it might be.
Okay.
Yep, and, and I'm pleasant with her and, um.
That's a, that's another place to put out the word.
Open to working with her, um, my experience.
Just thinking that's a place to put the word out.
Sure, sure. That, um, did not gain traction very well from my perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, yeah, and then, uh, yeah, so that, that's the plan and, uh, yeah, let's see, let's see how it goes. But I'd love your help in getting that word out and.
And I know you had mentioned before too about, you, you, and you even just said again, um, willing to fundraise to maybe help, help with the budget for these wood chips or some of the other, you know, logs or I don't know what. But we, Eric too, didn't we hear about those free logs? Or, um, like the telephone poles or whatever too? At one point we were, and, and, you know, to your point, Susan, it's like, we don't have to do the whole thing, but maybe some of these problem areas where things are really.
Yeah, I'm just worried that the telephone poles, I mean, I think.
Caprisole or something?
Probably treated pretty, some nasty stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm worried about putting something like that down. This natural, uh, this engineered wood fiber is just wood, but it's just cut a certain way, yeah, so.
And what trees are you talking about them taking down?
Astro trees coming down, I love it. Seen lots of people cutting down astro trees lately.
Well.
Lots of logs.
You know, so that might be a possibility of.
Yeah, what, what we could do is maybe try that technique on, on one of those areas and just get some feedback and just watch it and see how it, how it goes there in one of those.
I just can't imagine people taking a wheelbarrow from the parking lot all the way out to the other end of the park.
It's hard to imagine because we've tried it before and it has not succeeded very well.
Of, of having people do it?
Yes, um, the, the whole Friends of the Dog Park, um, idea.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, they just dumped the wood chips up front and then we asked people to.
They're not gonna do it.
It worked some. It could, I, I just think, I don't, I don't know what the room for improvement is, but, um, there is for improvement and I'm curious on that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think it would be more something of figuring out how to like schedule a, a day. We're docking the wood. Can we get, you know, 50 people to show up?
I mean, but also, I'm just curious, like, the town of Carbondale has those little trucks that have the beds and they drive out there anyways. Like, why can't the town of Carbondale supply some labor to fill those trucks up and drive them out to the problem areas? An idea, potentially.
You can have poop bags.
Yep.
Can they drop a load and pick up a load?
Yeah, why not, right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I would, if, um, there is interest in working with my business, um, for fundraising, I, my, I opened my business in May of '22. Um, I would like to throw another birthday bash for myself this coming May. So, um, yeah, let's get together and talk about what, how we can benefit each other. I love this community. I love that park. That's all I've got.
Yeah.
Eric wants to get hold of you?
Sorry?
Yeah, got you.
Great, awesome.
Okay, well, thanks, Anna. Yeah, no, I think, uh, thanks for staying on us because, uh, yeah, it's, it's been an idea and, and we have the budget to make it happen, so.
Awesome, amazing. I love hearing that. Thank you all so much for having me tonight. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
See you.
Thanks for coming in. All right. So let's see, I think the next thing's the pool, right?
Yeah, so it, um, been cranking out there. I don't know if you've gone by there, but, uh, boy, they've had, yeah, a lot of, a lot of action going on out there. They're really trying to get kind of complete with, um, a lot of the stuff that, uh, you know, that's not weather related. So before winter, it kind of really sets in out there. So there aren't all the concrete flat work, you know, that every, every time I go out there, there's a new concrete pour. So it's pretty neat to see it coming, coming together there. In the report, you can kind of see the scheduled milestones and, and so what's, what's kind of been pushed to the spring? And so that's the plastering of the pools. That's also the landscaping around the area. And also the install of the, uh, PV panels will also happen later in the spring. The Excel, uh, um, kind of approval process of, of all that is in, in the works too. So, I mean, that takes a couple of months to get, get through their process. So that's why that won't come online until, um, the spring also.
Will it be lit up for first Friday or something? The fence will be down, right?
Yeah, so right, right now they're, um, you know, they've installed, uh, the, the chain link, you know, around the, the backside of the pole. So that, that all of that fencing is going to come down as far as the construction fencing. And on the front side, um, that'll, that construction fencing will probably stay up for a while. Yeah, yeah, just because there's no other way to, you know, there's no, there's no permanent fencing there. It's just a building, so, so that will stay up just to secure the site, so.
Oh, through next, next, through finish?
Through.
Landscape.
Through probably March or April, yeah, to when they landscape, yeah.
Which part? The part that's in the road?
Yeah.
So that road is going to be narrowed? I mean, right now there, it looks like there was a giant hole that if somebody drove a little bit crazy, they were gonna, they were gonna go down a bit.
Yeah, that, that was an issue, um, that they had with the main water source. And so when they pressure tested that main water source, that's our main water line coming into the entire building, there, it was leaking. They couldn't hold pressure. So they had to re-dig it out. They had to concreted in. Had to re, you know, get all that concrete out and, and fix it. And so that's, that's, so that was a non, uh, non-planned, um, you know, additional work, but no cost to the project because.
So why can't the fence be moved off the street and the sidewalk?
Oh, it, that, that, that'll probably happen, but that fence will be up, though. It's not gonna disappear.
The building, will the lighting won't be done in the building?
No, not, I mean, not like on and functional.
I think that would help fundraising.
Yeah, because some of that, like, final work.
Or not, if they think it's all operational.
Because I know it's not. Not having winter pool.
Yeah, so most of the work done, you know, the outdoor work on the pools is really wrapping up, but most of the work over the next couple of months will be, you know, all the pool mechanical equipment, so. And then they have to operationally test everything. So we have to get everything commissioned and operationally passed, so.
I thought all that stuff was on the inside of the building, on the inside of the fence. And so the outside of the fence, the, the, the front side, the street side could start to look more finished.
Yeah, we won't see that. Yeah, we won't see that until the spring. Um, in your packet, I did put the shareable marketing videos, um, from the Let's Make a Splash campaign, so.
Yes.
Um, yeah, so you can watch them there too, so.
Yeah, so we have two, two stars.
I know, I want an autograph.
Might need their autographs. Yeah, you did awesome.
You guys did an amazing job, yeah. So I want to get that on the record now. Thank you guys for your time and effort in that. It was, it was amazing, yeah.
Yeah, it was fun.
Good.
We got a bunch of hot pies.
Did you practice that? How many pies did you go through? You didn't touch the pie, you just, in your practice.
No, we, we touched it.
You gotta watch it, it's like.
I did watch it. I did watch it. Yeah.
It was good.
It's great.
Little wobbly, 500,000 left.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like falling apart.
It's good.
And then the, the little kid one is, is just amazing. The kid's like, what do you want to do at the pool? Splash other people. Yeah, it's hilarious. Yeah, they're great. But, so that's, that, that's all happening right now. Um, I wanted to share.
But it came out as smash. I want to smash other people.
Oh, yes.
That's what he says. I want to smash other people. I'm like, oh, boy.
Um, so what I just stuck on your, on your table there is, is also there a kind of flyer that's kind of going out with, with the final push there? Um, and also, uh, you know, the capital campaign committee is doing a kind of final outreach, uh, this Friday, um, November 14th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, at Sopris Liquor and Wine for an informal outreach event. So, um, they'll be there to answer questions, share campaign ideas, celebrate how close we are to meeting our final fundraising goal. And then, um, if you donate, uh, you know, there's, Kiko's gonna be in the speakeasy and, you know, you know, he'll take care of you, so.
Get a drink, right?
Yeah. So this is Friday, um, at Sopris Liquor and Wine. And they're gonna just set up a, uh, Let's Make Splash table there. Uh, 4:00 to 6:00, yeah. So swing by, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
There we go.
Um, we still have, you know, a couple of grant asks out that we're waiting on. Uh, El Pomar will find out, um, in December. Um, we put in for the, um, the, shoot, I'm forgetting that now. Thought I had my sheet.
50,000?
Yeah, we, and that's just a, it's a quarterly deal, um, where I'm spacing the.
Hang on, I'm out here on the 25,000, El Pomar.
Yeah, it's El Pomar.
Notification December 16th for full application invite. T-Mobile's 50,000.
Yeah, T-Mobile, that's what I was.
Doing December.
Stopped on, so, yeah, so T-Mobile. And then we also have been in conversation with Alpenglow Foundation and just to, to see if they might be interested in, it'd be, you know, their kind of mission would be for the electrification and the energy efficiency in the solar PVs, so. So they're, they're seeing if, under their bylaws and charter, they're able to fund, uh, somebody who's not a 501(c)(3). So that's, that's the conversation and research that's going on right now. They're interested in the project, but not sure they're, they're able to fund the municipality, so. So that's where we are with them. Yeah, any, any other questions on the pool? It's, uh, I think it's, it's coming along really well. Lots happening over there. You can look at the photos in the, in the packet, really kind of see, um, what some of it's gonna look like, you know? So that's the, that's the exciting part. And they, they're, um, right now, you know, just the work they've done this week really started to have the building take shape with all the glue lamps that they're putting up. So you can really kind of see how that, that sold, that bifacial solar panel's gonna look on that south side. And then also that K-wall transparent, you know, roofing is gonna look on, on the front side of the building. The other thing I wanted to share with the commission is that there's an amazing, uh, sculpture of a swimmer by a local artist that, um, CPAC is trying to get, uh, some of their donor base, and I think, you know, one, one donor to purchase and, and give to the town to be placed onsite, uh, on, outside of it. And we did a, did a whole site visit with the artist and, and laid it all out, um, to where this would be. And it's, when you see the sculpture, you're like, yes, it makes total sense. It's this beautiful sculpture of a swimmer, like in mid-stroke. And it's like, it would just be amazing to have there, so.
What's it made out of? Marble? What, what's it made?
No, like bronze, massive. Yeah, it's like nine feet long. It's like, you know, weighs 200 plus pounds. Um, and so it, it would, it would be, uh, somebody would have to purchase it as a donation for it to come to fruition. But those conversations are happening, so hopefully.
Somebody approached CPAC about it, though?
Somebody offered it to CPAC for?
It, I'm not sure how that all, all worked, but CPAC brought it to us, brought it to the, the team, yeah.
That they'd like you to find a place for, or they'd like us to buy it?
No, that they would, they're gonna try to fundraise for it. It would be outside of our Let's Make a Splash campaign and all that. It'd be separate. It'd be just a permanent piece in Carbondale's collection of art. But, yeah, when you see it, you're like, yeah, that's, I mean, it just makes total sense.
Go on the, the street, like, the, the outside then?
Yeah, it would go on the main street and in between the landscape beds. And so it would, you know, be on a pedestal, like a, you know.
In the landscape.
A block. And, and it would be standalone in between the landscape beds. But it would be framed with all that glass block behind it. It'd be, yeah, it'd be, it'd be super amazing. When you see the sculpture, you're like, yep, makes total sense. Let's put that thing on there if we can get it, so.
Wow.
Yeah, it'd be really, uh, it'd be an amazing piece of art for this facility, so. And very appropriate, obviously.
Wow.
So that, yeah, that's, so that's where we are there. Um, any other questions on, on the pool? Okay.
So the master plan.
Yeah, so what I included, you know, I just wanted to share with the commission that, you know, with the pool project kind of pushing into next year and we really didn't feel like, um, we had the bandwidth staff-wise to, to really look at a master plan process in 2026. We're gonna be opening a new facility, um, staffing a new facility, figuring out a whole new facility. So that master plan's kind of been pushed to 2027. So 10-year master plan, 2027 to '37. And, um, but that gives us a little time to put that RFP together. So it's ready to go January 1 of 2027. So, so our mission, um, as a commission is to, you know, make sure that process is figured out and ready to go by the beginning of 2027, so. So we, I kind of went backwards there and just kind of, um, Hollis had found some, when we first started this process, found some pretty good, uh, outlines of, of, uh, Parks and Recreation master plans. And this one from Cincinnati.
No, this one, it's from Delaware.
Oh, Delaware, okay.
I think you got Cincinnati going because that's the nonprofit that got set up with Cynthia.
Right, okay, then that's where I got confused. Yeah, so the, this one from Delaware, I mean, I, I read through and like, yeah, that, that matches our needs. And then, you know, so, so that's included in the packet here. Um, and then, so this, the first really step, you know, I thought was to make sure we get a good timeline of, of producing that RFP. And so that's what's included in your packet. Um, and it just laid out, uh, you know, where to kind of go with that, so. You know, so our, our goal is to, you know, have the RFP be produced by mid-August or towards the end of August. RF, you know, P's sent out like, uh, end of October, a kind of a, you know, about a month to six weeks of them to respond to it. And Ashley, you can kind of let me know if that timing's long enough or, or too short, or, uh, for a, a 10-year master plan, you know, you need a little bit more time to probably.
Six weeks is generous.
Gen, it's generous, okay.
For, for the screening of RFPs or?
For people to, to.
To apply.
A response to apply. Usually it's like a month or weeks.
Bring it out in October and, and January.
Expecting responses by early November.
Yeah.
But then, then on your schedule, I think the time between interviewing should be two to three weeks after they submit, so don't drag out that portion.
Okay, great, great feedback, yeah.
From the screening of RFPs to the interview, that should be two weeks?
Like, we shouldn't, whoever is evaluating the submissions should not take more than a couple of weeks to shortlist that down and then hold the interviews and then make a selection. So maybe four weeks all in on that, all that steps.
Okay, so I can kind of get that as a four-week slot, okay. Okay, and then, then we'd, uh, you know, interview and select the consultant and then start the process. And how about the, the amount of time you, you feel is, you know, appropriate for a 10-year master plan process for, you know, as far as, um, you know, for them to produce it? What, what's?
I would say a minimum in nine months.
Okay.
I was wondering if this was a little short and the timeline.
I can say it's gonna be shorter, but it's, in reality, it's probably gonna take nine to 12 months.
Do the, do the assessment, the survey, the community assessment?
No, no. They're selected.
Once the consultant's selected and you say go, contract signed, it's at least, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's good. That's where I wanted to kind of get our timeline.
And that just builds in, you know, it's, it's not like very concentrated work every day of the week for that amount of time. It's, it's based around your engagement and outreach.
Okay, so I can extend that a little bit, that final master plan report.
Ashley, do you have, you know, like, um, because I just found that thing that Delaware, you know, whatever. Do you have something similar to that or access? Do you have something similar to that or access to something similar that can guide us in this process a little bit?
I have the, um, RFPs issued by dozens and dozens of communities that are similar, so I can pull those.
Okay, and we take a, what, three of them? Look at three of them, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, and just kind of pull it out, uh, pull out the best pieces of it. Yeah, and when I looked through the, that one from C- Cincinnati, um.
Delaware.
Delaware, what?
That's a far away from each other. Yeah, Biden's School of Government, they're gonna come after you. They are not in Cincinnati.
Complete community, I would.
Yeah, um, okay, I'll, I'll get there, I'll get there. You know, it, it, I thought it looked really good as an overview, but then, you know, we would definitely add our, you know, nuances too, you know, so. Yeah, cause we'll, we'll have some, just like what we just heard here, you know, the nature park's gonna be a, um, a nuanced piece of that, you know, master plan that we're gonna ask the consultant to focus on, cause that's our need, so.
Well, and I think too, when you and I talked and you shared, you, you, you know, that you shared it with everybody, is to give everybody an idea of what goes into them, you know, what elements should be in a master plan, cause it's kind of like a high level.
It reminded me, when I read through that, I'm like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. So, so I thought it might help us as a collective group, just to be reminded of what we're gonna be looking for out of the, out of this master plan. And those that have been involved with our last master plan, it was really well done because we were able to not shelf it and literally use it during the budget process every year. Literally use it by saying, we did this, we did this, did this, now how are we gonna do this?
And we're still using.
Through the ten-year process, all the way through till the end, which was to build the pool, so. Yeah, and so, so I, I, you know, that's our goal, is to find a consultant that provides us that type of master plan that is, that knows us well enough through that process and through their outreach, public outreach, knows what we want, and so the master plan was written so well because they knew what we wanted and knew, knew what we needed, so. They knew what we had, too. I mean, that was a big piece of it, I thought. They knew what we had and what we had to maintain. And that was one of their first recommendations, maintain what, yeah, so. So I thought it was really well-written. It wasn't a pie in the sky, do this, you know?
Ashley, do you have any recommendations for how this commission might be able to approach uh, helping Eric with our RFP, or?
Um, I don't know how the town does RFPs in general. Does, is, is it always the directors that are drafting those?
Yeah, usually, I mean, and, uh, you know, hopefully with some, it's a lot of eyes on it.
There's, there's usually some, well, there's usually a purchasing person in communities that does this on behalf of the directors. Um, but I think.
Not here.
The, um, examples will help inform, and then there's a lot of just standard town requirements for whoever submits, so that's all kind of outside of our purview, but, um, there's usually a scope of what you're hoping to get out of it. So that's what we need to weigh in on.
That's kind of our next step probably, is to look at these, um, other master plans and then just come up with our own scope utilizing that data, so.
Yeah, I was just, and I think you've done this on your timeline, at least what's in the packet, but maybe it changes with some of Ashley's input, is I think we'd wanna potentially envision that we have the master plan for budget season, for when we're putting together the twenty twenty-eight budget. Just so that I wouldn't want it to get done at the end of twen- you know, like, if you have to wait till you're creating the budget for twenty twenty-nine to incorporate new, you know, items out of it. So then if you work backwards from that, maybe we, you know, maybe it's
Goes out, maybe.
The commission weighs in on the scope of work in July or something like that.
Okay, no, that's, that's great feedback, yeah.
Well, it's kind of what he's got here is the final master plan to town is August, right? So that we have September, no, October to include it into a budget.
Yeah, but then he's got back.
Gotta move, yeah.
Gotta go, so we're gonna, nine months from that would be November.
That's what I mean, is that Ashley just shared that it might be longer.
Once to a year.
So maybe that timeline needs to start earlier, yeah.
Yeah, and, I mean, you can hire a consultant and say your start date is January one of twenty-two, you know, based on your funding and when you can actually start it, but you can get them contracted earlier.
That's what I was thinking, was that like, it could be November, December next year, that the contractor's selected to start January, and then you get your nine months, which might be a short timeline, or, I mean, you know, it might take longer than that, but at least that would give it nine months.
Okay, no, that's great feedback, that's all I wanted.
We're still talking about, we're still talking about, then, the. Okay, so, so the contractor in twenty, January of twenty twenty-seven is starting to produce our master plan. And then we have our master plan by the September of twenty-seven. And so then, what's going into the twenty-eight budget for that? Nothing?
Well, we don't.
Out of.
We're gonna, we're gonna start implementing it.
That's, yeah, that's gonna be the implement.
Whatever that implementation list is that's in the plan, that's like, oh, okay.
So we're at twenty, twenty-five right now, so at the end of twenty-six, we put into the budget for a ma- to hire a master planner?
Yes, okay, yeah, exactly.
Now we should be releasing the RFP, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll push some of that back, so to, with those, yeah, that, that's some great feedback tonight, so I'll push some of that back and, yeah, and we'll, if we can produce and even screen and interview and select the consultant before two thousand twenty-seven.
Exactly.
So you don't get a break between the pool and the master?
Writing scope, it's a few pages of reporting.
A lot of example scopes out there.
Yeah, and it gets to be very prescriptive, and I almost encourage you to like determine what is important and not do some of the things that may not be relevant.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I mean, I think, you know, we've, I've been involved with this master plan process for a while. I saw a very successful one and what we got out of it, so. And I think we, I think we can write pretty good scope for a master plan that we need. You know, that we're going to actually use and utilize, you know, in the future, so.
And I guess what just occurred to me is like, who else needs to be involved? So in the last one, the Trails Commission was involved. I don't know if PNC needs a little more involvement. And that's worked into a schedule, or, you know, you also outlining the project, need to know who's reviewing when and what.
After this, this March, I gave, um, Erica a map that I got that Wilderness Workshop has produced, it's all in Spanish. And this guy was there that I talked to that is actively engaged by Wilderness Workshop to bring in the Latino community more into all of our trails and recreation systems. So my thought right now with this is to somehow reach out to somebody on the Latino Advisory Board also.
Yeah, and I already talked to the, um, uh, the Bike, Bike, Bike Ped, um, Commission, you know, about this kind of, the scheduling wise, when it's gonna kind of happen, so. I went to their meeting, last meeting, and we were talking about Chacos Park, but, um, you know, talked about this also, when I was there, so. Yeah, and they, they want to be involved, and, yeah, so, that'll be good. Okay, thank you, everybody, for the feedback. That, that helps a lot.
Thank you for whoever brought in this Delaware thing. That was very helpful for me.
Yeah, it was interesting, wasn't it?
I did have one thought in there, and I was, as I was reading, do we feel like we, I don't feel like I do, so I'm wondering if the rest of you feel like you, we know our community well enough that we don't need to do, I don't know, just some kind of a community, we did a, what we called it? We did a, like a, a survey, a community survey. Who is in our community? How long have you been here? What do you do? What do you not do? That kind of, and it was a, a targeted survey that we paid and everybody in the town didn't get it. It was like, ten percent of the town residents got it, and we had a big push to try to get everybody to respond.
Well, I think that's.
And we got a lot of information, like, everybody in the parks, we'd been there for twenty years. We thought everybody in town had been here twenty years. It's like, oh, our turnover is like five years, you know, it's like, what is the turnover in Carbondale? How long are people engaged here? Do we know that kind of stuff?
Well, I think that's part of what the.
Kind of. So like, that's a statistically valid survey, and that requires getting pushed out at, at random. Um, and hiring someone in addition. So we typically won't do those unless we're required, cause they're pretty expensive. But we would do surveying, and anyone would do that. You're not gonna get a full perspective by people just showing up to an open house. So there will, you know, whoever proposes will have some touchpoints like that to get some basis of understanding, and that is critical. And understanding the community is critical, because we can't say what worked ten years ago is the community today. And the projections for ten years from now are not what they were even a year ago. So it's just making sure all that information is as up-to-date as possible.
And so the, the master plan planner person would be doing that kind of community assessment as part of the master plan?
Yeah, but very high level, um, and it depends on what other, uh, efforts have been going on in the community. There might be some in-depth research that could get pulled.
I just like this, this statistically significant survey, because it's more honest. When we have open houses, we get people who care, either positively or negatively about something, right? We get somebody complaining. We got a lot of complainers, you get, and so it's like trying to really tap into, you know, hitting everybody up that goes to the rec center, you know, getting those feedback from the Pickleball Association. I mean, I'm sure that, like, assume.
I just, um, closed the survey in Estes Park, and it was like six hundred responses for that size community, and they've had at least three other surveys going on in the duration, and it gives you a sense of who's taking it, and we checked in and like, we would have the benefit of having our youth committee and pushing, like that one, we, we are not getting anyone under eighteen years old responding to the survey. And so we could make a more concerted effort with our schools here to, here, push us out, just take five minutes, take the survey, and so you can kind of track it as you go and see who's participating, um.
Yeah, I just know with Age-Friendly Carbondale, we worked hard to try to reach across the community.
And did you get mostly older adults?
Oh, no, I mean, yeah, mostly, I mean, but, you're older adults, but we, yeah, we had probably ten, I think we had fifteen percent Latino and ten percent under, under twenty.
At least we, I mean, anyone who's doing this has the tools to track, like, how many uh, English as a second language are participating, how many teens, older adults, families?
Is it still true that, like, uh, you put out a blanket survey, everybody?
Yeah.
And if you get so many responses, that can be considered statistically valid?
I don't know if it's officially, but you can measure that against the size of the population, yeah.
Cause that's kind of what we've done in the past with our master plans, is have confidence in the results because of the.
A level of confidence is the way it's.
But you still get, like I said, you get the people who are either super enthusiastic about something, or super unenthusiastic about that thing.
Yeah, but it, I mean, it's, it's a survey, it's not voting, it's, it's taking a temperature.
Okay, neat. Um, thank you guys for the feedback on that.
Okay, anything else on that, Eric? Or anybody else? Okay, um, sent, you sent out your quarterly report. Did you wanna highlight anything? Does anybody have any questions about it?
Just questions on that.
I read one, something, I was like, what is that? Hang on, let me see. Oh, wait, you're honoring somebody with something. Oh, the Crystal River Restoration Project, the, a memorial to the Hous brothers?
Yeah, the Hoss brothers.
House, yeah, what, what is that?
Adele Hoss, she's, uh, it's her two sons. Um, yeah, so they, they both have passed. And so one was the general manager of RVR.
Oh.
For a while, for many years. The other one was a fishing guy, guy, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they, they donated to the, to the Crystal River Restoration Process and, uh, and, uh, had uh, requested that, with that donation, that they, they could put a plaque up there, and that was accepted by the whole team.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so that's in process, and, um, hope, we're trying to get it done before the December first closure, so. Uh, we're working hard on that right now, it just gotta prove, as far as, uh, um, location, rock selection. Um, yeah, it's gonna look real nice.
Oh, I didn't know about that.
Yeah.
So, uh, all right. Uh, any other questions about the quarterly report or anything? I mean, you guys are busy as usual. Okay, uh, Special Event Task Force.
Yes, so we set, uh, had a lot of information in that quarterly report, so, yeah, read through that, it'll fill you, fill you all in, for sure.
I guess, was there anything about Gateway Park that we should?
Um, just looking at, that, we did, that's the final report of it, so looking at our, um, uh, you know, kind of occupancy levels there is, is what I like to look at, so. Um, really, so with RV sites, seventy percent, uh, occupied for the entire season, so. So what that means is that there's just not many days in between these, you know, uses. Um, that, uh, you know, that, that we would need to fill, and they're, they're kind of hard to fill, cause there might be just one or two days in there, you know? And, um, and, and that's good data for us to kind of look at. There's a whole company that looks at this data and then m- markets those days you haven't sold in real time. And we haven't gone with them, but, uh, they pitched us, and we don't know if we, if we're there yet, um, and if the need is there. And so this data kind of helps us decipher whether that's, that's, uh, you know, needed. But we had sold-out nights, you know, we're forty compared to fifty-six last year. I'm not sure what drove that. And, uh, you know, down four percent, um, you know, the, the whole industry seemed kind of a taper down after COVID, you know, so. And that, that's could be explaining that. But what I thought was.
Is it just in reducing the number of tent camping sites, that kind of stuff?
Um, you know, it doesn't, the tent camping, the way they book it out, that's not a, uh, offered, um, on the website where you can book it out yourself. You actually have to talk and call to book that out. And there's reasons for that, um, and, and, and you have to talk to the campground host. They make sure you don't have sixty people and forty vehicles, you know, so, you know, things like that, so for the, the, they, uh, they have, they're able to share the rules of the tent camping and see if it fits, so. So I think that, that does limit probably, you know, the, that drop-in use there. Um, but that's designed that way, actually, cause of the problems we've had with drop-in use there, so. Um, but the, you know, what I thought was an interesting stat here was the revenue to date. Um, from two thousand thirteen, when we took over the park, to two thousand twenty-five, you know, over a million dollars of revenue. Um, all, all put back into the, the property, and still has a lot of, you know, maintenance needs out there, so. Um, you know, and in our budget right now is just kind of figuring out the sewer and lead field system. You know, cause we had some problems with that this last, uh, summer, so. So we are, you know, um, and that's why we didn't raise our, our rates or anything, too, with our, um, this year, with our schedule, um, of rate increases that we didn't include the RV parks, so. So we're, uh, we're probably a little low on, on the fee structure there compared to other RV parks, but till we kind of fix some of these amenities that should function when somebody's paying to stay there. You know, and, and hopefully we'll get it fixed, and then we can look at maybe a rate increase next year and do kind of a comparison of other rates. But that's kind of where the RV park sits, the, what's nice is the, uh, the campground hosts who've been coming back for fourteen years are continuing to be willing to come back and be our hosts, so. So it's, that makes it really easy, cause they know that park better than any of us, so. And they, they're able to sell it, yeah. Does that kind of cover, yeah, what, what you wanted to know there? Yep, you bet.
Any other questions or comments on the quarterly report? Okay. All right, Eric, where are we here? Special events, yeah.
Yeah, so Task Force Meeting Analysis, so we're, uh, um, this is, um, just to refresh memory, this is open to the public, open to neighbors, open to, uh, special event producers, open to somebody who wants to start a new event here. It's open to, open to everybody, um, that's just a kind of a. It's open to, open to everybody. Um, that's just a kind of ad hoc committee. And so the first, uh, meeting is Wednesday, December seventeenth in this room, five thirty to seven. We kind of go over last year's events and, um, with who's ever interested in providing feedback for those. So we kind of go down our, our event calendar and just talk about the events on that one. And, and hear the neighbors' concerns and, and kind of, you know, make some good notes. And utilize that information when we produce our two thousand twenty-six event calendar. And then that will be, um, reviewed on Thursday, January twenty-ninth. And then it'll go to the trustees for approval at that next, next meeting, which would be in February, first meeting in February. Um, what's different, um, this coming year is that, and, and what we're going to use that second meeting for is to train the, uh, the event organizers on our new software, Open Gov System. So they know it's because it's, everything's changed about how we're going to ru- roll out that, that software for the event producers. Like here's where you're going to go and we'll do a training session during that meeting. So everybody knows, um, where to go to put in their special event for next year. So it's a different paperwork process and all online. So, so it'll be, it'll be good. So, so that's what's happening there. If any, you know, commission member wants to partake in those, you're welcome to. And, and, you know, you can, and yeah, as a representative of the commission. So if you want to come to those and you're welcome to. So.
Will there be a special event for a pool party? Pool opening party?
Um, yes. Thank you for mentioning that. Yeah. So we'll, we'll be figuring those dates out. And be able to publicize it. Yeah. And stuff. So, yeah, we, we, we might, that date might be a little, little sticky.
Memorial Day is May twenty-fifth.
That's what we're getting for, but we'll see. We'll know more when we get closer. But so we might, yeah, I'm not sure how we're going to promote that if we don't exactly know that's going to happen yet. But we'll, we'll know more pretty soon.
I was wondering if there would be.
By February, I think we would.
If there would be a, um, a party for the, the team, you know, before the opening, like maybe even on the, like the twenty-second.
Yeah, yeah. The committee is talking about that. Yeah. So.
Before it's, uh, the open to the community pool party?
Yeah. Yeah. That's being discussed too. So. Um, and then I, I did include just kind of what they, um, what they fill out, you know? And, you know, just so you could see it, you know, does your event, you know, require a street closure? Does it, are you requesting a parade permit? Are you requesting a race permit, you know? And, and just, uh, you know, just kind of, that's how we build our calendar with all the, the special event organizers is we require them to give us this information so we can, uh, you know, build it for that, that second meeting of the task force. So just include that. So you can kind of see what we're asking them to, to do. And is, is anybody interested in, in participating in those, those meetings?
Rose, are you online? She's participated in the past, right Eric?
Yeah. So if it works, just let me know.
Yep, I'm here, guys. I'm just driving home. So I didn't, I missed it because I was going through some, maybe a spot. What can I help? What's up?
Are you interested in, uh, participating in these special event task force meetings as a, as a Parks and Rec Commission liaison?
Yes. I imagine I will have a family member that has surgery that day, but I will still very much enjoy being a part of those.
Okay, thanks. I'll, yeah, the, the dates and schedule is, uh, in the, in the packet. So just, yeah, let me know.
Yeah, I think, yep.
Thanks, Rose. Yeah, it'd be good. Your historic perspective there would be good. So thank you.
Definitely. And we also participate in just about every single event possible. So.
Right. Perfect. Yeah. Penny pig, yes.
Right. Um, any questions or comments on the special events stuff? All right. Moving right along. Damn, these meetings are like zipping along these days. Okay, reports and updates. Eric?
You bet, um.
And speaking for Robin.
Yes, Rob, Robin gave me a little blurb. I'll, I'll read that. Um, but, uh, first I just wanted to share, you know, some projects that are going on. So we're, um, we do have, uh, uh, the irrigation buffer zone, you know, is, is happening around, it's already happened around Thompson House. And what we're doing is we're, uh, when we got those facilities inspected, um, by our building inspector, he's like, wow, our irrigation that we have on those buildings is, is actually, you know, undermining and potentially very detrimental to the foundations of those old, old buildings. So, so I put money in last year's budget to, um, really take that irrigation, create a buffer zone. Uh, you know, uh, crusher finds and, you know, just kind of a dry zone, you know, there. Um, and move the irrigation outside of that. So even with wind and, and, uh, you know, overspray, you wouldn't be, you know, getting that, um, foundation wet. So, so that project was completed out at the, uh, Thompson House and we, we're gonna, we just walked the project today at the Jalen Cabin History Park. Cause the same, same exact issue was happening there. So we're going to pull that irrigation away, create a buffer zone around those two, two properties too. And so that's, that's happening. Um, I'm psyched about that because I did put that in the budget and I'm getting it done. So, yes. Yes, get it done. And, uh, yeah, and not see it disappear, you know, out of the budget. So. And then the other thing I wanted to kind of talk about is, you know, osprey nests and, and, uh, you know, you know, what, what we, you know, they've been here, they've presented. You guys have a lot of information about that. But what our concern was, was, and we wanted something official, you know, um, from the Audubon Society. Saying that it's okay to have activity, um, where you put these osprey nests. Cause you know, when, when I put that kind of question out, we're thinking of putting in that Gateway, um, River Park, you know? Which is one of the busiest, you know, put-ins in the whole state, right? So, so I didn't want all of a sudden put up a osprey nesting thing and then sorry, you can't use this during May through, you know? Um, and so we wanted to make sure we got that, um, on kind of paper from them. And, and, you know, an official kind of response from Mary Harrison and Dee Malone. So, so we did get that. And, and because Dee, what happened was Dee came back saying, oh, they, you can't have this going and this going. And here's all the restrictions on osprey nesting times and everything. And then, um, Mary Harris came back and said, well, it all depends on the height of the pole. So as long as there's this distance, right, between the activity and the nest. So we're like, okay, well, what, what is that distance? And so that, we're still figuring that out because what Dee said was like, you know, no activity within a thousand meters. I'm like, that's, that's not going to happen, right? Yeah.
How far is that?
Yeah.
Some meters. How far is that?
It's like a fifth of a mile. So.
Eighteen hundred meters is a mile.
Yeah. Oh, yes. More than that. Oh, yeah.
Five eighths.
Yeah, fifteen hundred meters is like, yeah, okay. Yeah. So five eighths of a mile. Okay, thanks. Um, yeah. So, so we don't have that space, you know? So, so, and how we're going to get this solved, I think, is just to, um, go to Colorado Parks and Wildlife and go to John Groves and say, John, you're, you know, you're the expert, you know, or you have resources to experts in this field from, from your position as Colorado Parks and Wildlife. And do an onsite visit with him and Mateo and the Audubon Society. And, and nail down a spot where we're not going to have any problems. So that's the next step. So.
Well, Eric, don't we, you know, and I'm not sure where you're thinking of putting it exactly. Cause I mean, I know there's the road and the turnaround and everybody's putting in and stuff. But we, don't we own property up river from there? Like up towards the, um, hotels and stuff like that? And we've got like a little, and that's so passive up there. I mean, would it make sense to put it up there?
Oh, potentially, that's, that's, that's super interesting. Yeah.
Instead of like, right where all this busyness is?
Yeah, there is public land there. And, uh, okay. And that's, uh, yeah, that's east of the bridge, actually.
Yeah, we do own some of that.
On the north side of the river, yeah.
Yeah, there is a little walking path that goes down there.
So fishing easement is what it is. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay. We'll, we'll look at that too. Yeah. So that's the next step there. Um, you know, this, this, this takes a while to get this done. Um, and there's, once you dive into emails and some of the, you know, known restrictions. That's why it's going to take us a while to kind of get this figured out as far as the location and height and all the little details there. But.
Is this going to replace the nest that's on the power pole by the substation? They're trying to move that bird or this is just a new one?
I mean, they usually just take those down and then the bird goes looking. So hopefully when you put up an opportunity for that bird to find something, then, then, you know.
They take that down? Seems like it's always there.
That one's.
That nest.
That one, I think is, I don't think anyone has plans to take that one down.
Which one are you talking about?
One thirty-three.
On top of one of the big pools.
Okay.
That's on a really high pole.
And it's on a really high pole, but it's also on a really, really busy street. And I've already mentioned like, you know, the osprey nest that's on the bike path up in, up on the frying pan or whatever, on that little bridge you go over and, you know, and you're only like, what, how many feet from that? And they're like, whatever. So I don't know. Um, yeah, they, they seem to be pretty tolerant of people.
Yeah. And so, you know, Mary Harris is like, you know, we also consider the unique situation of our town osprey. She calls them several pairs have been attempting to nest in unsuitable locations such, such as high school light poles or utility structures. Where nests are repeatedly removed for safety reasons. Um, our shared goal is to establish, uh, identify and establish a safe alternate nesting sites to accommodate these displaced pairs. So. Ideally, osprey nesting platforms would be placed in completely undisturbed areas. However, such conditions are difficult to achieve within or near town boundaries. So. So it's the site that minimizes disturbance while still offering safety and accessibility. So.
So some, some, some of them are trying to make a nest up by the high school. So maybe on a pole.
Well, I'm wondering over by Newt Park or something, but you know, that, and I don't know how close they, I mean, you, you know, they can be with eagles and all that other jazz. I mean, we already talked about.
Yeah, I think we're going to learn, learn a lot by just doing one, right?
Right.
And, and then we can see if this program will expand after that.
Yeah.
But what is the purpose? Is, we're not being told they don't have anywhere to nest. And we're not trying to relocate any that are getting in trouble.
We're trying to give them.
Know that they are. There's some at the high school.
But that's not where we're looking. We're not.
So why, why aren't we talking Newt instead of?
Because there's the one by the power station and stuff too, I think.
But I don't think we're saying we're trying to relocate anybody.
That's what I was wondering. Are they trying to relocate that one?
A, a spot for something to discover?
That's my understanding.
I, you know, I think the population is just growing around here.
Yeah, that's, I think, evident.
Yeah. So, and, and I think one of the reasons why we looked at, from what I understand from listening to the recording and stuff, part of the reason we were looking at that is because DPW can help us, right? Or DPW would be part of it.
Yeah, that's our next step.
Cause Newt Park, they're not really engaged with us at Newt Park, are they, DPW?
No.
No. So it's kind of like a shared kind of situation, right?
Yeah. And I think that's where we're going to learn a lot is, you know, how CPW wants this to happen, right?
Yeah.
And, and gets it stamped and, you know, through their whole organization, you know, gets it approved. And we're like, okay, now at least we have a base of what it should be. So.
Now we know what to do and blah, blah, blah. Yeah. Yeah.
So that's, that's the strategy there. I just wanted, wanted to share that. So. Yeah. And, and to be honest, I haven't had time to even call John, but, but we, that's our, that's our next step. So.
Okay.
Any questions on other projects, um, we got going on? I have my thirty, sixty, ninety out there for you.
I don't have any.
Um, I, I can't share with you that, you know, the efforts of the Red Hill Council, the BLM, us, with some additional signage and some additional, uh, kind of, uh, protection of some of the places we don't want trails to be built on Red Hill. And we don't want the public to, to use the restoration pieces up there. After much effort, you know, this fall, a lot of it was vandalized and taken down. Yep. And it, and that kind of happened mostly on BLM's land, um, not on our land. But they, you know, hopefully they're going to catch and prosecute somebody for it because they have good cam footage. So. Taking place. Yeah.
They've got cameras up there now?
Going after people with dogs off leash?
Nope. Going after people destroying public property.
Somebody hiking with a crowbar. Destroying all of the new signage that was just put up there.
What?
All of the stakes that were in the ground with the ropes on them that are like, you know, this is a restoration area.
Please stay off.
He's got them like all bundled up, like literally a person seems very intentionally going up to, I don't know what, to what end, but super frustrating.
Yeah. So hopefully that, that, you know, the jurisdiction's probably in Carrefour County Sheriff, you know? They prosecute. So, so they're, they're figuring it out and then, yeah. And so.
An investigation going on?
Yeah.
Cause Red Hill Council installed, uh, game cameras because of ongoing vandalism. And so they have a good enough picture to know there's a crowbar and the person carrying ropes and all the things.
They just put up and date, date, date and timestamped after, you know, that they were up there like, like Chris was up there before that. And then the other Chris with Red Hill Council, our Chris was up there before that and everything was good. And then, then their Chris came up after that when it was all destroyed and the date, dates, you know, and time is right in between that. So. I think they've, they've, they've got enough evidence. They just have to figure out how to catch and prosecute. So.
Dang. Somebody who really hates trails being rebuilt, like wayfinding signs so you don't get lost. Yeah. It's kind of appalling.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty disturbing actually. Yes.
I don't know if they think that nobody should be up there, but it's like.
There's plenty of people that do not like any mention of your dog should be on a leash. Most of the time I don't say things to people if their dogs are little and stuff. But when a dog is running through the landscape all over the place, they're not watching, they're talking.
Right.
Yeah.
It's like, you don't know, you don't know if your dog's shed over there or not. Come on.
Yep.
And if it did, now you have to go over there and get it.
And it's on the crypto soil and all the other jazz. It's like.
You've always done it this way.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I, I get you, you know, I, it used to be a population of, you know, two thousand around here. Now it's not. So. Get over yourself. Enforcement of the dog rules.
Yeah, maybe someday we'll have a, I mean, the only enforcement is Rangers, you know? And that's how Aspen does it. I mean, they're out there every day, all day.
Well, I, I'm also.
Writing tickets, writing big tickets.
Forest Conservancy, right? We go out there and we look like Park Service Rangers, Forest Service Rangers. You can speak with some authority, even though you can't really give a ticket and people behave. So, I mean, there might be an avenue for volunteer cousins.
Official. Okay.
Um, so I can just read through Robin's kind of report. So, um, winter program, programming at the recs off to a great start. Youth basketball is underway, solid participation. You know, trying to set, really will be trying to satisfy a lot of the, you know, kind of waitlist with, by, you know, saying, hey, we need a volunteer coach to satisfy the waitlist. And they're not successful sometimes, you know? So, so I think you got as many kids as possible planned. So. The, those participating in our youth climbing class are having a great time. Our numbers aren't really big there. But you can, you have pretty limited numbers on a good climbing class anyways. We have carved out time in the gym, four days a week for pickleballers. So through the warm, uh, uh, through the winter, you know, months, um, and, and with the warm weather, we haven't seen many yet. So they've been playing outside still.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Operationally, exterior painting on the recreation center has begun and is. Um, operationally, exterior painting on the recreation center has begun and is progressing well. Uh, this month's older adult trip will take participants to the Holiday Craft Fair and Parachute, offering a festive and social outing for our older adult community. We continue to face challenges in securing a consistent Silver Sneakers instructor. And we are actively exploring solutions to ensure continuity for our senior fitness participants, cause those classes get a lot of participants, so, yeah, so it's, it's hard when we, uh, don't have a Silver Sneakers, um, sanctioned instructor, cause they have to go through the Silver Sneakers training to be a Silver Sneakers instructor, so. So that, that's just an added challenge there. Uh, please keep this in mind if you have anyone that might be interested, so. Uh, finally, the Roaring Forest School District conducted a reunification training at the Recreation Center last week. We closed down the rec center for an afternoon so they could, um, you know, really perform a, you know, if some, you know, active shooter or someone's in the school, they'd have a, need a reunif- reunification place for the parents and students, and so, so that's, that was the exercise that they conducted last week and uh, the exercise was successful and district staff reported feeling more confident and prepared should they ever need to implement these protocols, so. Um, good use of our, our rec center public space, so. And that's for report.
Yeah, um, I, I, I wanna say, uh, good job on the, um, summer as I'm looking at the youth and adult program report from your summer, um, your quarterly report, nice, uh, cost recovery. Really good, and, you know, the comments, you know, about the ones that, you know, kind of were a little bit low, um, and how to, you know, the plan for kind of boosting those next year, but, I mean, a hundred and nineteen percent, nice job.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, some of those programs are real, real successful and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we have our coordinators, you know, produce those reports and, and be involved in that quarterly report, so. Yeah, so, so they, they need to make those decisions and figure out how to keep, keep it or lose it and, yeah. Figure out how to promote it and they do, they do all that, so it's nice.
Well, good job for that, on that, um, kudos to that team.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're a good team over there and they're, they're working really hard, yeah, we've got a good team.
Do you happen to know how much money was raised at Potato Days for seed piece?
Um, we had our, uh, you know, kind of wrap-up meeting and didn't have final numbers yet, so, yeah, I'm, yeah, so they're still, still yeah, working on that, so I'll, I'll try to, we, we need to get that, uh, you know, kind of solved and figured out, so. Yeah, you know, cause remember this year wasn't, we weren't the fiscal agent anymore, so I don't, I think, yeah, we kind of lost our, which is fine. Believe me. Lost our, that oversight of that pro- program, but it, I thought it was real successful, I think the public didn't notice the internal changes that were taking place, I think it was
Coffee was as bad as usual.
But the food, food, at least the feedback we received, food was the best ever, cause we did hire a caterer to really help us, you know, produce some of those sides and everything, yeah, yeah, and so, yeah, so we, and, and all those potatoes were grown locally right here in the bottom land, so, yeah, it, it was neat, it was fun.
Right. Uh, okay, reports and updates, commissioners, I know that you wanted to say something, Susan?
So, yeah, um, the wayfinding group has met a couple of times since I've been here, um, and we're honing in on, uh, about eighteen sites around town that we're calling our pilot program. So three, three sites, the, the three entrances to town, and then focusing on, uh, kind of a Carbondale Loop Trail. Um, and then the Rio, integrated with the Rio Grande Trail, and then focusing on a route to downtown and to the major facilities in town. Um, so along Rio Grande, for example, I talked to Eric about this, putting in, we're replacing all of those little signs that they're very cute on the wood that are out there, um, so all this, this first stage of it can be done very, pretty quickly and inexpensively that we're using all of the existing infrastructure that's, that's out there, I think there's maybe one place, um, that we might have to do something more, but one of the pieces is to integrate, and we don't quite know what to do, but to, as you're coming in on the south side of town, the the primary corridor is to come to Snowmass and come around that way on the e- uh, east side of Carbondale, but there's also to to identify where the pickleball courts in North Face Park are and to come in on that, I don't know the name of that trail that's behind the schools over there. Somebody did a really nice job repaving that thing, by the way. But also over there, a lot of people express, there's no real bike trail along indicated bike trail along that road going to North Face Park, um, and then, and then when you get onto this trail behind the schools, it looks like you have to go across somebody's driveway to access it, so it looks like it's not public. So putting some signage in there to kind of really indicate that, and, and using, um, color-coded um, labels for these routes and also then have some kind of color-coded dots or dashes or something in the pavement that this is where that trail goes, this is where that trail goes. Um, and then on top of that is more of an umbrella wayfinding operation that's more town economic development oriented driven, that's a, a bigger thing that, that Arts and the Chamber and Ryan wants to, Ryan wants to be involved with as a, as a representative of the town economic development side of it, and that has a bigger scope and a longer, a little bit longer timeframe, but we're really trying to drive this initial wayfinding for bikes and pads that we can possibly install in the spring and, and at least have, have it in, in place for Bondale Bike Week and, you know, some things like that, that. And Rio Grande is being really helpful with us and Michael Stout with Parks is Arts, with Arts is being really, really helpful. It's a great group of people, it's, it's going well.
Awesome.
Yeah, I wanted to share that with all. Oh, and so when we get those, so one of the things Michael's working on right now is we identified all the places where we wanna put him and what they need to have on him and he's gonna do a couple, just really quick, dirt, quick and dirty mockups that we then wanna bring to bike beds and trails and then also parks and recs. So I'll be getting with you, when we have that ready, I'll let you know, so that we have that on the agenda.
Okay, great.
What's the, like, larger plan?
Um, well, the, the, the arts, Carbondale Arts, like this artway back here and they want, and the, and the Chamber, they wanna really direct people to, we just wanna say there's downtown and there's the Third Street Center and there's the Launchpad. And they wanna say, oh, there's Pepino's and there's, you know, the Crystal Theater and uh, if you look on Main Street, there's two signs, um, one is that big kiosk that's at Chaco's Park, that big, like, round thing. Highly detailed of all kinds of stuff in town, time, but how many people actually look at that? So it's like, that, that signage wasn't very effective. And then there's another one that's at Third and Main that, like, nobody on the wayfinding committee even knew was there. Right, the same thing with the, the ones along the Rio Grande Trail, um, and it's also like redoing the entrances, like the big stone entrances, Carbondale, also where to park, if part of this effort is to get people to come to town, park, get out of their car, bike and walk and recycle and downtown or, um, and the circulator, then we gotta tell them where to park. So that's gonna also involve, where are they gonna park? Which, which begins to be a, a bigger town economic development issue, do, you know, do we need to pave this parking lot over here? Do we need to go with Rafta and make a bigger parking lot out there at the Park and Ride? You know, this is a private lot that everybody parks in across the Crystal Theater on Main Street is you know, if that goes away, if somebody puts a business in there, we lose all that downtown parking. So, uh, we learned that Jared is, uh, the city planner, has also apparently been tasked with looking at parking in town and where the town, how the town wants to establish parking, but part of the effort of all of that is, so that's the big picture. Like, do, does it, how many people know there's a big sign that says Carbondale out there as you come off of one thirty-three, right? It's gotten hidden by the bushes and stuff like that, so those are kind of big branding of Carbondale as a place to come and do these sorts of things. Um, you know, we got this pool, we wanna get people there and we don't want them to all drive there, cause it's not that much parking by the pool, right? So we want them to park at the Park and Ride and take the circulator, so we have to tell them to do that, um, those kinds of things.
Right, good job, sounds like you guys are clipping along. Does anybody else have anything on the commission? Yeah, I do, well, that was kind of what I was gonna, yeah. Um, so first off, I wanna thank Drew for, even though he's not here, for, uh, running the meetings and everybody, you know, you guys look like it was a, last month you had a quorum, I was, I was like, ooh, not too many people there. Um, but anyway, you got business done, so that's good, um, and for showing up tonight and stuff too, cause I know we're going into holidays and some other things, but we did find out this week in working with Ally and Patrick um, about some openings, you know, or we, we know that Eric's, uh, Eric Lamb's position has been open, um, what we didn't realize though is that, um, we ha- we can have a second alter- alternate uh, as well, and so I went and looked at when everybody's terms were expiring, you know, the ongoing conversation we've had at different times has been, how do we even out how many positions are turning over each year, um, and as you can see, we're, we're kind of stacked up um, with three of us, uh, our terms are up next year, which I can't believe three years has gone by again already. And then, um, you know, uh, we're stacked up in twenty twenty-seven as well. And then there's only Drew. You know, his position there, and so, um, you know, looking at this, oh, and I, I just kind of put the alternate as if they got appointed to a three-year term, basically, they'd be out there in twenty twenty-nine. So the, that's the upper part of the, the table, the lower part is, are my recommendations for how we can even things out, which would then be, um, appoint, like, you know, appointing whoever would be taking Eric's position as a voting member, you know, for like basically a two-year term or that it would expire in twenty twenty-eight, and the alternate as well, the second alternate, you know, that's up for we can massage this a little bit or whatever, but at least, you know, you look at it and it's like, oh, man, we'd, we'd be pretty balanced at that point, you know, doing it that way. The other thing that, well, is there any, are there any comments or questions on on this, and, I mean, because if we're gonna do that, Eric, do we need to vote on this, like, I, I put it out there so everybody can contemplate, you know, kind of look at it and then would we vote on doing this? Do we have to vote or just, how would that go?
Yeah, but we didn't put it in the agenda, so the.
No, not tonight.
Yeah, yeah, but so, and so we kind of figured out what, I think we'd figure out what we wanna do tonight and then put it on the agenda for next meeting and then vote on it next meeting.
And then vote on it next meeting, so, that, that we would adopt that appointment schedule?
Say that again, you wanna put it on the agenda for next meeting to vote what the terms would be?
Yeah.
What?
Cause it's not on the agenda now, so. That we'd have to put it on the agenda, so it's public knowledge, see, and then, then be able to vote on it next.
Right, I, um, I mean, my only concern is that in the ordinance, it says that X amount of members and X years in terms, so I don't know how that looks to actually just change term limits outside of the ordinance.
I think, don't we make a recommendation and send it to the trustees? And then they approve it?
I mean, it could be that simple, but I think some research needs to be done.
Well, I mean, they're all three-year terms, but then that you have, you run into the potential of every, of the entire commission turning over at one time then.
And that happens, I mean, with board trustees too, generally it's like even years, you know, so every two to four years or something, right?
And the whole trustee doesn't, the whole, no, they're staggered too.
To an, you, right, but to an extent, I mean, depending on if it's like an even number of years or whatever, it
The thing is, is that you guys are really on this and, and for a long time there was a lot of stuff that got really messed up. You know, like when I took, when I took things over, so that's what we're trying to do is get back to.
A stagger, yeah, so that doesn't.
An even amount of people in a staggered term, I'll talk to Patrick if you want me to.
Yeah, well, the only thing is that I, I know that it was all messed up and their numbers of commission members on each commission was different and it kind of all turned into a level playing field, right? Every commission has allowed X number of members and X number of alternates for X number of years. I, my, I'm curious if we need to change that for all boards and commissions then. Not just the Parks and Rec Commission, would have, you know, X number of members that had different term limits.
No, 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 this is only for this round to get us into this, so like, for example, Eric Eric Lamb's term would be up in twenty twenty-seven, so that would be a whole nother year. So if we appointed somebody to fulfill the remainder of his term, then they'd have to be, it, then that position would become open again in twenty twenty-seven for a three-year appointment. So my suggestion is that we're, we're actually appointing somebody to fulfill the remainder of his term, but extending his term to two years. That's how you stay on staggered terms.
Yeah, and that, yeah.
Because if, how we got messed up is that when somebody got appointed, they were appointed for three years.
Right.
Instead of, you know, this is what you're doing is replacing this person's term.
Uh, yeah, I think we just need to ask some questions of Patrick and such to see how that would work.
Okay.
We don't have anybody in that position right now, anyway.
Eric Lamb's position.
No, we don't, he re- he resigned, so if we, so we, we put that out there that we're asking for a new applicant for Eric's position and we'll offer it as a, to expire in twenty twenty-eight, that's the and then it will be on a three-year schedule.
Yeah.
And then we are, we, so we, and we, we haven't advertised another alternate position for our board.
We haven't, but we have, we have right now two interested people that I think have put applications and then Eric, we couldn't get it together for the packet, so we're pushing it to December and then somebody else talked to me about it, another, about it today, so that's three potential candidates.
Cool.
Everybody wants to join. Why wouldn't they?
I think this is logical, um, it just, does it work long-term if it's the people that don't fulfill their term?
Yeah, that's the only way, it's just trying to get back onto staggered terms, you know, even staggered terms again. And then, and then everybody is three, appointed for three-year terms, three-year terms, three-year terms. And then if somebody resigns in the middle of their term, then that person's appointed to fulfill the remainder of that vacant term.
We haven't tried to do this before?
Yes, we have. We have done it before you guys got here. To try to get on
Yeah.
An even, more even staggered rotation.
So the problem in the past was when somebody quit early.
Mm-hmm.
That a new candidate, a new person came on the board for three years instead of finishing that person's term.
Correct.
That's how it got all messed up, yeah.
That's how.
Here we have nine members, three.
And that was.
Staggered, three, 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 yeah.
That was before I got on the commission and then it continued and I was like, wait a second, and then Eric became the, I was like, Eric, he's like, I know, it's a mess. And so then we've been, you know, slowly unraveling this knot.
I do like it better than like, you're here for a year, like, two years seems good, to, to get that position filled.
Oh, yeah, and then they can, of course, be, you know, reappointed and all, all kinds of stuff.
For these new ones, it makes sense to ask them, you're gonna fill these terms and it's just gonna be a two-year term to finish out these two, which were moving their term end dates. Because evening it out or whatever, we're getting it back on track.
Yeah, we're asking the trustees for a one-time change in terms of these, of these two new members.
You may not even have to ask us, like, I think that's part of the research, it's just
Figuring out.
Yeah, what the language is, uh, yeah, determining the term, but it might be, this might just be fine.
So, um.
Thank you, looks good to me.
I'll, I'll talk to Patrick.
I will too.
Can you explain it?
Yeah, I'll ask if that's a possibility and then, um.
How to do it if it is a possibility to do, yeah, exactly, how to do it correctly, that'd be great.
I'll have him reach out to you.
Okay. I just said hi to him.
I did this kind of stuff all the time. Different boards.
No, it totally makes sense, but I don't wanna say, oh, absolutely, and there'd be something, that's like, no, you can't just change the amount of time someone spends on a board, willy-nilly.
Yeah. No, it's not willy-nilly.
Yes.
You know, like, yeah.
Great.
Okay, good. Well, we'll work on, on all that, that stuff.
So we might be looking at three candidates at our next meeting.
We might be, we might be looking at three candidates for two positions.
Yeah, and we would meet them, um, you know, during the meeting and have their applications. And just, I'm, 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 this is a question. More than a statement. Um, and then it would go up to the trustees and they would decide.
And so we wouldn't make any recommendations at all?
Well, no, we're only hiring, if we, if we're interviewing three people, there's only two positions.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't want to.
If it's a contended, you know, can, like, then it's, you guys kick it to us and we make the decision.
So we don't have to.
We don't even make a recommendation.
We just get to meet them.
We can like, oh, thank you for coming.
You can join us for the interviews like P and Z does. We have a, we have a P and Z member who joins us for the interviews and kind of weighs in, but they don't vote on. The decision. And we kind of did that so that boards don't have to be put in the position of picking favorites. Not picking favorites, but like.
Right.
Yeah, it kind of takes away the, yeah, we'll be the bad guys.
Right.
Yeah.
We don't get paid enough for this.
We do.
We enjoy. You're elected to be in the hot seat.
Two bucks, we don't, yeah.
Okay. And, and then this, I'm, I'm just out here on this diligent thing. And noticing that the members listed hasn't been updated. Cause we still have Liza Logan on here and Eric Lamb's on here and, um, we don't have.
Oh, on the public facing side?
I don't know if it's the public one or if I'm logged in or, it says sign out, so I'm logged in, but I'm out, you know, on the, this page.
It's, it's on the agenda.
I know, it's down in that stack, right?
Yeah, it's kind of down at the bottom where it says.
I've seen that before. I am not a hundred percent sure how to check it out. So I will look into it definitely.
Yeah, it's down here at the bottom where it says members.
Thanks for noticing that.
And I don't know, yeah, I just did tonight. Anyway. And I don't know where else we have people listed or not, but.
I got you, I got you all cleaned up on the website, pay, like your personal page on the town website. I ma, I manage those, but that one I, I missed.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, hey guys, it's Rose. I also have something else, um, from members not on the agenda. Eric, when's the last time you checked out those barbecues at Miners Park?
Oh, Miners.
Yeah, I can send you some texts, but they've straight just got big holes in them.
Okay, so they need to be replaced?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that. So thank you.
Yeah, I haven't checked any of the other ones. I was just at an event there. Uh, and we noticed, uh, the holes. So I'll show you a text after this call or after this, um, meeting, but I just want to bring that up.
Okay, yeah, we can, we, I can see, we might have some money in the budget still, so, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Erica, you have some stuff for us?
Sure. Um, I don't have a ton. We, um, didn't have a meeting yesterday. Because it was Veterans Day and all the staff were off and we decided we wouldn't make them work to just have our meeting. But really it's all been focused on the budget. Um, and just a huge shout out to staff because, you know, not only did they have a new finance director, a new town manager come on in August. The former town manager and, uh, finance director. Started the implementation of a new software, but of course with that transition and a couple of months in between, it didn't get it. So the staff had to get all of their budgets into a brand new software. And, you know, we have a new finance director and town manager looking at our old spreadsheets of our budget and then this new. And so I can't even imagine the headaches and the amount of work, but it's been a ton of work. So we're a little bit behind and kind of we're not too bad, but you know, just, I know staff is cranking on, um, getting in front of us. So that we can approve different aspects of the budget. So we've heard from police and just wanted to also give them a shout out. We're, they're installing a whole bunch of EV charging stations here behind the building. And we're converting our fleet. I can't remember how many vehicles. Um, but we should have our first all-electric police vehicles in the next month. Um, and that's been a really hard, um, that's been a goal of theirs for a number of years. But, um, getting, um, actually ordered and delivered has been problematic. So we're super excited. There'll be more, we have more in the budget for next year. And then of course we went through the Parks and Rec budget, exact same as what, um, you guys saw, uh, at the last meeting. We have our community grants, so we give out 1% of our general fund in the community grants process. So we'll be, um, going through that on, at our meeting on Tuesday. So we gave out or giving out $155,000. And it's everything from, uh, like the Carbondale Education Foundation, Roaring Fork Youth Orchestra. To Youth Zone, just a whole lot of like a wide variety of K D and K, Soper Sun. Um, and everybody applies. So we, um, kind of give out that money the best we can. And I, I say that because a lot of people asked for 7,000 and they're going to get like a thousand or 2,000. But a lot of it is kind of like we know from the pool project, if they can say the town of Carbondale gave them money, then it helps them with other funding sources. So, um, we're not the sole funder for any single organization by any means. And then that's really, so our focus the next couple of meetings is, um, more budget presentations, more budget discussions. Making sure little things aren't falling off the table, you know, just like I said, between this transition of two different softwares. There's little things that come up that are like, oh yeah, we need to look into that, make sure that that project that you guys talked about is funded. Like we put money into wayfinding so that all the work that your committee is doing, we actually have a little bit of money to then buy some signs or whatever that might be. So there's a few things like that, that, um, we're just working on. So.
Is there any, is there any sense of the, um, the sales tax revenue? Projections for next year being larger, smaller than this year? Talk about that. Is that part of this process or is that just?
Oh, yeah.
A discovery of, we sort of assume it's going to be what it was last year going forward.
Um, every year it's, um, the finance director does a lot of work of just conferring with fellow finance directors across and kind of what they're. Expecting or what they might think. We've been really conservative the last couple of years. And then exceeded our expectations pretty significantly. Uh, and so I think we're at 12% over budget right now. Um, and that could even out by the end of the year, you know, come down.
We're 12% revenue over?
Over what we were projecting to bring in. Yep.
So we can replace reserves that we used.
Exactly. Yep, yeah. And so, um, I can't remember what percentage, we're still going pretty conservative where maybe we'd be looking at a one or 2% increase. Cause we don't see any, we're now capturing all online sales. You know, we don't have any new revenue. Makers opening up, um, like when One Source Building opened up. You know, we knew that was going to be $200,000 to $300,000 in sales tax addition. So there's nobody like that that's really adding, so we're keeping it pretty conservative. Um, especially because there seems to be, although I feel like we say this every year, but some economic uncertainty going forward. So trying to keep it conservative and then if we have extras, then that builds our reserve.
So with the economic uncertainty since last January, has town seen a reduced sales tax this year over? No, not, yeah.
No. The thing to keep in mind is that, um, most of our sales tax comes from grocery restaurants. You know, we have some retail, we have construction retail now, um, building for Source or I think I get their name wrong every time I say it. But really, like we saw over COVID, our neighboring communities that rely on tourism, you know, saw their revenues go down. And ours just stayed the same because everybody was still buying food and buying booze. And the liquor stores actually generate a lot of, uh, revenue for us as well. So. Yeah, so I think it stays pretty consistent.
Does, does it seem like that one year that we, when they first got the internet online sales, that was just such a huge boost?
Yep.
And so now we're counting on that.
Yeah. And part of that was we transitioned from trying to capture that all of our sales, selves to the state system and the state's collecting that for us. Um, and so, yeah, that was a 17 or 21% increase. Um, and that year we had only projected, I think like two or 3%. And then made those decisions that ended up being really smart for us.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Yeah. That's where we get our money to spend.
Right.
Fun stuff.
Yeah. So if anybody has any questions about, um, yeah, anything that you end up seeing in the budget or in the paper about our budget discussions, uh, feel free to reach out.
So there was one comment about the 300,000 for the Ginetti Park Bathroom that you might pull that out of general funds, not the park budget?
I think that's in the park budget, but I think we might do the Chacos.
It's the Chacos Park that was, was the, getting scrutinized in the sense of, uh, you know, we had a million dollars in there for next year as a, as a matching grant. That's, we put that in and we were going after the Night and Water Conservation Fund grant, which required a, a hundred percent match. So that's what kind of is going to probably disappear out of the budget, but there's still going to be hopefully enough money. This is what you guys are discussing on Tuesday, but hopefully enough money to get a phase one going there. And get, we have enough money in the 1% that Excel has to underground, we think, um, you know, but maybe not, maybe not the full amount we need down underground there, which would be phase one there. So, um, so we might need some extra in the, in our own budget for Chacos Park to complete that phase one, so.
And we also have in the budget to take some funds from the general fund and to put it into the, um, Park and Rec. Was it Sales and Use, Rec Sales and Use Tax Fund? So that you guys, so we start working towards, because as of right now, um, we have a fund balance policy that we want our general fund and the Rec Sales and Use Tax Fund to be at. Eighty percent. Are, we're at 75 for general fund, 80% for you guys. And we're way below that right now. I think it's 22%, 27%. Um, and so our, and this is a policy we made, so as per our policy, um, we're going to make it right and, but not do all of it at once. So I think we have 200 or right around $200,000 that we're going to put into that fund. So that as you guys are.
There's like a three.
Opening the pool, there's.
To backfill.
Money, yeah. So we have three years to get it back up to 80%.
Yeah, hopefully our fundraising will help that process take.
Yeah, right.
Right, that's all I have.
Um, Nick and Amaliet, um, we are going to be opening a new facility in May here and we're going to need a lot of staff. So I want to kind of tap you guys and at some point here in the next couple of months to help us kind of promote job opportunities to, to the high school or so. Okay, and you guys have been working with Brian on the promotion, yeah, with the, let's make a splash, so. Okay, neat. Okay, yeah, so we'll, uh, I'll have Brian, you know, since you guys, you know, I've been working with him and know him. But that's, you know, we, we definitely need to tap into some opportunities for some lifeguards and front desk staff and water swim instructors. And, um, yeah, we, we're, we're going to be hiring a lot of people, so. Okay, neat. That'd be fantastic.
All right, anybody else have anything else? Okay.
I move away during this meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?